PL 2024-02, communication from Council Chair Reposo, requesting the presence of the Planning Director to provide a briefing on the beach access to the area fronting the end portion of Anini Road.
Who should receive?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
No, we're in the middle.
Yeah, okay. So, just turn over to you.
You, you, okay. Um, yeah, I'm a non-committee member. Uh, I asked to put this on the agenda. Um, I think everybody's familiar with Anini Beach. I think for those of us that were here when we were little tiny tots, uh, for us that couldn't afford to travel to the mainland, Anini was one of our vacation spots, um, as lo- as well as Ko Ke, Hanalei Pier. And that's, for those of us that went to Summer Fun back many, many, many years ago, Anini was one of the common, uh, field trips that we would go to. And Anini is very special to so many of us. And I had always assumed that Anini Road was a public road. I mean, if you know, I used to be a police officer and we never looked at Anini as being a private road or it was just, it was a, as far as we knew, it was a county road. And at some point, the county stopped maintaining the road and they stopped doing trash service on the road and, uh, honestly, haven't been down to Anini, um, to the end of Anini in quite a long time, many, many, many years. So when I saw the post about the blocking of, uh, Mr. Morimoto posted a post on Facebook about the access being blocked, about our residents being kicked off the beach, about access to the end of Anini Road being closed, um, I started to ask some questions and, you know, kind of found out that maybe we have, you know, private landowners may have reclaimed or claimed some of the public properties. And that is not right. So I did ask Public Works, I didn't ask them to be here, but, um, I did ask for the records on the maintenance and trash service because I knew, I was on the council when it stopped. And, you know, we, we got a lot of calls from the residents that lived in that section of the road. And let me just read Public Works' response. My question was, "How long has the county maintained the road and provided trash services?" And historically, the County Roads Division, Hanalei Baseyard, maintained Anini Road from Kohio Highway up to where the pavement ended back calendar year 2012, as well as approximately 900 feet of unimproved road that continued beyond the paved portion. And they have a map attached. Additionally, county refuse collection services were historically provided for residents along the entire length of Anini Road. Due to the short time requested for this response, we relied on anecdotal evidence." So we'll, that, that's bottom line is what I remembered, that we did the trash all the way to the end. And why were the maintenance and trash services terminated? They terminated for the non-county-owned portion of the Anini Road due to road and limbo issue. Again, you know, I remember when Council Chair Pofara was here, the roads in limbo was a big issue. You know, the state doesn't want it, the county doesn't want it, it's still a government road. And at that point, this was back in 2012, the county made a decision to stop all of that. Termination of refuse collection services for the unimproved coastal portion of the road followed due to the roadway conditions which were unsuitable for the trucks. So basically, the county had maintained that road for a long, long time and we collected trash for a long, long time and then it stopped and then when we stopped maintaining the road, fell into disrepair, so then we could no longer go in and pick up trash. As I look at the maps and as I look at the testimonies from a lot of you, and appreciate all of you that sent in testimony and as well as talking to longtime Kauai residents that are familiar with Anini, um, which I think is most of the population in my era, I mean, because Anini was so, so popular and it still is. It was clear to me that we gotta, the council needs to take a look at this. And I know there's some question about jurisdiction because it's a state beach and blah, 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 but at the end of the day, I mean, we cannot sit back and wait for the state to do something. We cannot wait for anybody else to do something. And all I want to do is raise awareness. Hopefully, my goal is to have the state do a shoreline survey and have that survey be, you know, delineated so that everyone knows where the state property ends. And any, and this is not just for Anini. Around this island, any landowner that tries to claim state land, they need to stop. And we need to go back and reclaim that land, take all of their o'fala off, take all of their fake vegetation off, and put that beach back for the local people to use. I mean, it's, it's simple. So that, that's why we're here today. And, uh, Mr. Cavalio, and again, hopefully at the end of the day, we will have enough information and, and the state will listen and do that shoreline survey, the certified shoreline survey, so we can once and for all determine where, where the, is the county, I mean, the state property ends. Um, there's also an issue about the road, but I, I don't know this. Until we get a certified shoreline, I wouldn't be surprised to find that road is in the state right-of-way. So until we get that survey done, we, we just don't know. That's step one. And I'm hoping that this meeting will, will encourage the, uh, the state to, to move forward quickly to get that survey done. So with that, thank you, sir.
Any other?
Um, I, I have a little presentation, but, um, I can, this is my agenda item. Let me know when is a good time.
I would, I would, I did ask Mr. Morimoto, um, because he's done a lot of research and I think he, yeah, he is registered as a speaker. If he, and he has a presentation as well, Mr. Cavalio.
Okay, so, well, Mr. Morimoto will come up and do the presentation first.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So, so after that, um, presentation by Mr. Morimoto, we have planning as well.
Yep.
I want to see, you know, not only our pub- public's, um, point of view on, on, you know, what the situation, but I want to see what our county's point of view like, even, even if we have maps to show exactly what is state and what is private and, you know, like I, like you said, Mr. Chair, um, Anini Road has, has been a lifestyle for a lot of us, not from the North Shore. And we need to preserve access and fishing rights. Thank you.
For your council members, thank you for taking on this issue. My name is Peter Morimoto. I'm a registered voter and it's an election year, so it's kind of why I raised the issue. For over a hundred years and since at least 1892, Anini Road provided public access to Anini Stream and the big channel that allows boats to get past the reef and out to, into deep water. Depending on the conditions, you can swim, fish, dive, surf, and kayak on that stretch of beach. Recently, and I've been told that it was in 2000, oh, thank you, in 2010, oh, excuse me, 2020, uh, someone put up a guardhouse and a gate across the road, essentially cutting off access to the stream and channel. They replaced the gate with cones and, um, but they still restrict public access. Uh, there are boulders on the beach that prevent the public from putting their boats and watercraft into the channel. Often, commercial beach chairs and surfboard stands are placed on what appears to be public property. There are two issues that I want to bring to your attention. First, this is a public road under the Highways Act of 1892. I have some photos here. This is a screenshot of Bing maps of the area. This is Princeville and Anini Beach at the top. This is a shot of the same area from Google Earth. And you can see all the subdivisions, um, have been graded, great aina, as we say. Uh, this is a close-up from Bing images or Bing maps of this, the, uh, Anini Stream, where Anini Stream and meets Anini Road. This is a Google Earth image from the same, uh, area. And you can see all of the runoff in the stream going out into the, into the ocean. Uh, this is a screenshot from the Kauai Conkey Tax Map website. And, uh, that lot that's in blue in the middle there is, uh, owned by the state. And it is past the area where they, they combed off and, and, and put the guard. So I don't know how that happened. This is the gate. Somebody sent me this picture. I, I, these photos I didn't take. I think Mr. Checo sent me this one. Uh, here's another one without the gate, but with the, some kind of vehicle. Here's a map of Hanalei done by WA Wall in 1893. And, uh, this is a close-up of that area. And you can see the road going across the stream at that point. Here's another map of, by Wall, done in 1903. Here's a close-up of the area. Again, you can see the road crossing Anini Stream and going up towards Princeville. Here's another map from 1907. It's a survey of the Anini Kulianas. And as you can see, there's the road again, going towards the stream. This is a subdivision, uh, map of Princeville Ranch done in 1968 by RM Towel. And here's a close-up of that same area. Now, if you notice, the road stops right where it says, "Anini Government Reserve", right? And then it continues on past that. Now, that's an interesting one. I don't know how that happened, but they made the road disappear. This is a photo of the area just beyond where they post the guard. And you can see the surfboard stands on the beach. And, uh, here's some lawn chairs or some beach chairs that they put up. You notice the grass here is really green and lush looking. It's because they put dirt and planted the grass on what appears to be public property. Here's another photo of the area, just kind of a before picture, another before picture. Here's an after picture, another after picture. So, um, this is a passage from the Diamond versus State of Hawaii case. And, uh, kudos to Karen Diamond for suing the state. Basically, it talks about where the shoreline is located. And the reason why that is important is because the shoreline determines public property. Now, there are two ways to determine the shoreline. One is by the vegetation line and the other is by the wash of the waves. So in this case, the owner, what he did was he planted, he dumped dirt and artificially planted vegetation to enlarge the vegetation line, to make the vegetation line go makkai of what, what the actual shoreline was. And so what the court said was, you know, "That's wrong. You cannot do that. Merely planting artificial vegetation, uh, does not determine the shoreline." So, uh, they decided that the shoreline would be determined by the upper reach of the wash of the waves. And I think what needs to happen here is, we have to, as, as Chair Reposo said, determine where the shoreline is because that will determine where public property begins. This is from the Hawaii Administrative Rules, uh, Chapter 13 dash 221, uh, and it talks about unencumbered lands, which includes beach and coastal areas. This defines commercial activities, okay? For the purposes of this statute or this rule, it means a use of or activity on state land for which compensation is received by any person for goods or services or both rendered to customers or participants in that use or activity. And it goes on, "Commercial activities include activities whose base of operations are outside the boundaries of the unencumbered state lands or provide transportation to or from the unencumbered state lands." And here's the, uh, rule that prohibits commercial activities without a permit. This is from the Kauai Special Management Area Rules. It says, "No person shall be allowed to conduct any use, activity, or operation on lands located within the SMA, which may significantly impact coastal waters or related coastal resources, without first obtaining a Special Management Area permit." So, uh, I think what needs to happen here is, somebody gotta look into this, determine where the shoreline is, determine where public property is, and figure out whether or not an SMA, if a permit is needed to conduct those activities and whether or not a permit from the VLN R is needed to conduct those activities on what I believe is state property. The second thing is, that road cannot be closed off to public access. It's a public highway under the Highways Act of 1892. And, uh, I believe there's a law against obstructing public access. And I, I gotta go look it up and, and I'll, I'll share it with the council, uh, if I find it. But what's happening down there is they're trying to privatize this beach. And it's a microcosm of all of the issues facing Hawaii and Kauai especially. You know, you have the one percenters, right? Trying to squeeze off the local people from resources that they had access to for generations. And that's wrong. And I'm hoping that, uh, in this election year, you people will do something about it. Thank you.
No questions.
Yeah, so, Peter, for me, you know, it's nothing about election. I, I never thought of myself as doing more during an election year. I just do what, what is right. But, so, have you brought your concerns? I mean, you get a lot of experience, a lot of respect, you've worked here a long time. Did you bring your concerns to the Planning Department, to the mayor? Um, and, and what, what was their response?
You will hear, hopefully, from community members who brought this to the attention of the government back in 2020, okay?
But even to Mayor Kauakami?
I don't know to whom. To the, to, to the Planning Department, correct?
Yeah. Because, I mean, the mayor being an avid surfer, avid, you know, um, supporter of, you know, the fishermen and, and he said that, I just, I'm surprised that the mayor, you know, hasn't responded, I guess. And, and, um, you know, because it's a travesty. I, I haven't encountered the, the blockage, so I didn't personally know about it until now, actually. So, yeah, anyway, I'm, I'm pretty shocked and I would hope that, um, the, the message that you've just presented with all the facts is conveyed to the mayor because I'm sure he'll do something about it. Well, as far as any, I mean, as far as the, the grass being planted on a beach, as far as, um, access being blocked, I, I, I think the mayor would do something.
To, to put it in the bluntest terms, whoever made the road disappear for five years, going on five years, got a lot of juice. You know what I mean? So, uh, thank you for taking this on because you guys are bucking some, somebody with juice. You know what I mean?
Right.
And, uh, look into it.
Yeah.
Let's find out what's what. Thank you.
Um, no, I have a lot to say, but I'll say it on my own.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Any other member, uh, people in the audience wanting to come up and testify? Go to open up now.
Are we gonna hear from Planning first? Okay, because I, I have a whole presentation also that might really add something.
Yeah, can we, I'd rather do the members first.
Yeah, I would recommend just doing a public testimony because I think the public may have the information.
And then we can do.
That we can, yeah, and then.
Okay. Aloha, no, my name is Rosin Cummings, known as Manavaia Kea. Um, so, my experience is, we sued the gov- the governor for two years in a row on the versus proclamation. And then Peter was representative of Kauai and Koloa for development. So what he says is true. When you get money involved, it's not an easy fight. So stopping small stuff is not hard. But something like this where you can clearly see if you go down there, the privatization. So our family goes down there because I know of burrows in the area. I'm a ho'o'ilina of Kelly Ahunui who has a, pretty much a whole entire kulihikaia under his name. So I'm here for the people, actually. So what is happening is detrimental to the health of the people. Anini became very desolate. I was born in 1983. My father used to take us down there because he's a surfer. I come from a lavaya family. Um, I take my kids as much as I can down there because I don't want them to lose that connection to the area. So if you talk about mental health, and talk about a vision that was given to me by God, you're gonna have an increase in suicide no matter what age because of disconnection of aina. So stuff like this is considered violation of laws, okay? So I'm gonna go down. So on the record for the record, notice to agent is notice to principal, notice to principal is notice to agent. I am one of many heirs descendants, wa'opuna ho'o'ilina, who has inherent birth rights, um, to aina. As a ho'o'ilina of Kelly Ahunui, Helu Patent 11215, not above nor below as equals with kuliana, I see there is a legal representative in the room. People need people. So unjust enrichment and argument of trust law cannot be at the benefit of corporate interests like Principal Corporation or any other corporations over Kanaka public interest, especially not ho'a'aina, native tenants, kuliana landholders. So unjust enrichment came up in the law, lawsuit pertaining to the state versus Vona Kea. Basically, that the government cannot put public interests or cannot put corporate interests above public interest. If someone's receiving money, then that could be an unjust enrichment. The kanavai written by Kanaka for Kanaka, based on the rights of Kanaka, the people written in the Book of Rights of 1839, the Bill of Rights of 1839, a right cannot be taken, but a privilege can because it was given. In the HRS Section 7 dash 1, right-of-way, so this is where the right-of-way access comes from. It refers, it's the oldest written law for Hawaii, refers to Civil Code 1859, 1477. In the law 1477, right-of-way, no new law, right to access can, cannot be taken away because the Constitution is already protecting it. In the event you got, you get arrested because of trespass, no one can take from you what God has given. So in Section 172 dash 11, Law 1872, Chapter 21, Section 1, was revised in 1897, Republic Law. Palapalasi la nui, the kingdom seal document, by virtue of law, living descendants, laws are made to protect you. Officers don't know the law. So if a lawyer in the course of, in the course cannot make an, um, if the officer in the course should not and cannot make an arrest out of ignorance or indifference. So how many times must we be confronted by officers and/or any warranty deed holders, ignorant and indifferent officers?
Can you pull? You can come back up again for additional three minutes.
Okay, I was just actually gonna close, are in danger to our luhuni. They're in danger to our luhuni. Mahalo.
Okay, mahalo for your testimony. Madam Clerk, is anybody signed up on this?
No.
No? Okay. So anybody else in, uh, please come forward and you have three minutes to testify. And the green light, yellow light, and then two seconds.
Aloha, my name is Halnani Pacheko. I live in Kilauea. And, um, my family has more than a hundred years' history in Anini. It was a place that, you know, people didn't want to go to because it was so remote. But now it is become the place where people want to go. The ocean was our, was our icebox. And, um, but let me tell you that, um, I worked for Principal Corporation for nineteen years. And, um, you know, we had to pick, you know, during those days, you needed to choose, um, jobs, right? And, um, Princeville saved Kilauea. They employed all of the people, retrained them so that they could work on the golf courses and had a job because they have to buy homes. So, um, in those days too, there were designated areas of, um, visitor destination areas that would be developed and as tourist bases. One was Princeville. The other was Waipoli. The other was, um, Avili Bali and Koloa, where we had, um, visitor destination areas. And the difference in tourism during that time, because I've been in that business for a long time, was that tourists would come to Kauai. I worked for Inter Island Resorts, that was Kauai Surf, Inter, um, an islander on the beach. And they would run tours through Kauai for two days. So they would bus them in, they would check in, they go to Waimea. The next day, they go to Hanalei, they put them on the bus, they take them to the airport, and they're out of here. So very little impact on any of our, our landscape on Kauai. They dropped their money and left. Well, then you folks all allowed them to come into our neighborhoods, which was a very big mistake because now we are feeling it. And not only, and I, I warned the county about this many years ago, it's not only in the visitor destination areas, but it's in all of our neighborhoods now. Where now the taxes are rising because the value of property is rising because they're able to charge whatever they want to charge to be in those areas. So, so like you can rent, you know, like rentals in Anini were like $12,000 a week, which again raises the value, which again makes the tax higher, which again makes all of us.
You got the rental, so you can come back?
You can come back.
You can come back if you want an additional three minutes, okay?
Yeah.
Great job. Anybody else in the, come, come forward?
Hello, I'm.
State your name.
I'm Robin Kukowski. Um, I was born and raised down at Anini. Um, and I would like to just, um, ask for the state to get involved with the survey. I think that would be a really great first step and absolutely would support that. Um, the grass situation, I think, is something to look at as well, if we could remedy the grass once the survey gets done because the grass is now considered, you know, their, their property and there's their, uh, personal belongings there, like their chairs and everything. And I personally haven't been asked to leave from that place, but I've had the, um, the cones up and not been able to go down to the end in different circumstances and things. And another topic is that area as being, um, a pretty dangerous area, um, for, for drownings and things like the back channel there. So there needs to be the, the access for, for, um, private trucks and ambulance to be able to come down there excessively. And the traffic there is insane with all of the potholes and everything. It's, it's pretty intense to get down there in the first place. Um, that is an area where people do drown. So that would need to be, you know, have more public access, um, ma- maintained and managed. And, um, it just worries me, you know, just the progress that has been made in the last few years of, you know, what's to come with that area because we know there's large plans, you know? So, um, I think now is absolutely the appropriate time to get involved and, and see, is this road government property? And, um, and I, I wonder why it has taken this long for it not to be serviced. That's all I guess I'm gonna say today.
Okay.
Yeah.
Clarify. So, um, when you say "they," um, I mean, has efforts been made to question like, hey, is this you guys' property and, and do they defend it? Or are you dealing with like?
They're, they're, I, just things that I follow. Um, I, yes, people are asking, you know, "Why are you assuming responsive, assuming ownership of this area?" And I'm, I'm not exactly sure.
Okay.
Yes, I know that.
So the "they" that we're talking about, are there like absent, um, owners who are, have like property managers or?
No, the "they" that they're talking about is, you know, the North Shore Preserve and Principal Corporation, right? Jeff Stone, right?
Oh, so it's Jeff Stone's property?
I mean, he's the owner of the North Shore Preserve and they have the, the business homes there and then another spa home in the back and things, yeah.
All right. Okay, thanks. That answers a lot of questions, so thank you.
Is anybody else in a, y'all who wanted to speak? Anybody, okay? State your name. You have three minutes.
Aloha, Hokoka baby. So I'm sure, I mean, maybe some of you not as familiar with this, but we definitely should be familiar with this. And this is not just an Anini problem, this is a Kauai problem. I think we know, yeah? Zuckerberg pretty much blew that up from the get-go. So it's pretty much the same thing, yeah? Or no? Pretty much. And that's like Jesus said, Koloa, you know what I mean? Maybe the West Side, one of the least, except for the GMO companies, you know what I mean? Just owning and blasting and pretty much ruining all our beaches. The mountain to the ocean, same thing. I mean, now they're taking over the beach, but their golf courses have been, you know, ruining Anini reef for generations. but their golf courses have been, you know, ruining Anini reef for generations, right? You can't, you don't even barely fish over there anymore. Why? Because of all that runoff that come off of the golf course down there, I'm sure. Doesn't take a scientist to figure that one out, which I'm not, right? But, I mean, it's just atrocious and it's sad. And it's just some billionaire BS that's taken over our island. All the way out to Haina, you know what I mean? Like what, 30, 40 years our family had to fight to even get Haina? And, you know, now it's Anini. And like, you don't have to go through all of that just to protect one area. You know, it's just sad how hard we gotta fight. And to come here to even do this is just atrocious. I barely could get out of bed this morning. Because how? You know what I mean? Like, this, like you said, the juice, the money, like, doesn't take a scientist to figure out what's going down there. Shouldn't take one whole island to figure out what's going down there, like, you know what I mean? Like Nadine, Luke, whatever, you know what I mean? You guys already know. This isn't something new on our island. This isn't, like, I mean, I love Uncle's presentation, but duh, right? I mean, or is it just me? So, thank you guys for bringing this up and hopefully we can just clean up all this billionaire BS that's stinking up our whole island.
Thank you. Anybody else wanting to come forward and testify? Lanny's gonna come up after just putting it out for... You can come back. Do you wanna come up, Auntie?
Okay, and so this meeting...
Real quick, the reason we take public testimony first is if you folks have any kind of questions and it's much easier to get it before planning comes up so they can, you know, they can address the concerns.
And so I guess the, the meeting is regarding access and we are losing our accesses now. You know, Anini, Pila, Larson's Beach, Secret Beach, Kahili are all in jeopardy because we're losing all those accesses on the North Shore. So, in 2020, January 2nd, I filed a complaint in regards to Jeff Stone blocking the access to where my cousin lives. She couldn't get home that day. They put in a gate. And I contacted Epsom and he actually came down to look at it and was working on it. And he sent me a couple of maps. It said, well, the property owner can put a gate at the beginning of his property. And he was looking into it. He gave me a name. I have it in my phone. And then, of course, we went through pandemic and the whole thing, so. At the day I went down to check, he, they were, they had trucks there, a roller, people working on the road and on the beach. I have pictures of that. I can tell you who they were. And so he came down, he got them to pick out the gate that was right at the entry of that area. And I just might let you know that, you know, my grandfather, when he lived down there, he actually tried to block the road himself. He put a gate across, he put a chain across the road. And Mr. Chisholm filed a complaint at that time with the DLNR. And there is records of that in our file with the DLNR. And the reply came back to him that he had to remove the chain because it was a public road. Because that road used to go back and then there's a government road that goes up on the top, right? That used to be probably the very old road before. And then I understood that they bought the government road on the top. You see, I work for Princeville. I know that the problem was that they could not have yet access down to the beach. And they were wanting to get down to Anini from way before. Of course, now it's a whole different ballgame, a whole different owner. And now they are developing the Western Plateau. When we were doing it, we were all pretty much on the Eastern Plateau.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Anybody else in the audience or in the gallery?
Aloha, Makalakama, wanted for the record in protest because I like to wait till after planning. This is an example of how we lose our culture, how we use our information, how we lose our practices, how we lose our knowledge. This area at the very end of the road is personal for me. We have Ohana lands there and we, for generations, have fished there. I, in my own lifetime, have fished kala there. Pulehu kala is Auntie's favorite. So losing that access is huge. But more importantly, this is serving as an instruction, as an example for us all over Kauai that you cannot plant the beach. Karen Diamond's been fighting this fight pretty much solo for, you know, decades now. Let's hooey up and make this the shining example of how you can not treat the beach. It's not your beach. So I have focused on this area in recent times more related to monitoring for sea level rise. And I have seen myself the debris line of the high wash of the wave, which is the legal definition for shoreline, mauka of that road. Mauka of that road. The debris was actually in the North Shore Preserve property at this, what they're calling a beach club. It was on that lawn. So if we're gonna push them back, we get a survey, push them back to what is the truth today. This is how we're gonna save our accesses. This is also how we're going to protect our people from sea level rise. It's important that we use this place as a textbook, an example to our residents and to our government folks that this must occur. I will tell you that from personal experience, requesting a shoreline survey of the state is a very long process. They wait for a surveyor to fly over. And you need to press the speed button on this one because otherwise DLNR takes a long time. It's just their capacity issue. But if you say, no, this must be done immediately, do it now, they will come. They come with a team and they must inform us when they come. And they will let Karen know, they will let me know, they will let you folks know. And we will all go down there with our evidence because they don't necessarily come on a day when the debris line is visible. So this is personal to me and I'm trying to be helpful here and use this as an example for all of Kauai, for all of Hawaii. The law is the law. Mahalo.
Thank you, Makala. Okay, so if there's no one else in the gallery wanting to speak, we're gonna call Planning Department to come forward. I'm sorry, you wanna come? You can come back up and do an additional three minutes.
Rosencumies again for the record. So I've been in court since 2019 trying to fight for our rights. The reason why law is important is because when you go into court, the judge wouldn't utilize the law. So if kingdom law does not exist and the statutes do not exist, HR seven dash one has Civil Code 1859. So seven dash one includes building materials, water, landlord titles subject to tenancy. So when the landlords have obtained or may hereafter obtain alory of titles to their lands, the people on each of their lands shall not be deprived of the right to take firewood, house timber, ahukortatch or kele from the land on which they live for their own private use, but they shall not have a right to take such articles to sell for profit. The people shall also have a right to drinking water, running water, and the right of way. So the law is written in here. That entire area has become desolate due to the water diversions and pollution from developments. I fought development in Hanalei and I had someone who worked in Princeville Development admit to me that, why are we making such a big deal over five burials when when they did Princeville, there was bones every eight to 10 feet? We numbbed out society at this point. And ignorance to law is not an excuse. But our cultural practice is being lost every single day. I'm 40 years old and I have seven children. My grandmother taught me to fish in Anini. She taught me about waterways. I get hard time teaching my kids the same thing because of access. So I urge you guys to please look up, look up the law itself because it must be upheld. And as far as planning goes, there's an excuse that, oh, we gotta be notified before the planning there. That's not an excuse. Anything, anything that is new condition that is introduced to the planning must be obtained to the point where the planning has to pull and process their permits. There's many of laws that are being violated in these agencies. It takes a person one year to just go through files for one development area. That's how long it took me. So I urge you guys to please take this matter serious in the capacity that you can, please. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you for your testimony. Now can we have planning? Come forward.
Morning. Jodi Ikuchi Saiguza, Deputy Planning Director. Just have to apologize in advance. Really, our director has been more intimately involved in this particular issue. He went out to Anini last week personally, along with our inspectors. He could not be here. He provided notice in advance that he was not able to be here, but, so you got me. But to the best of my ability, I can provide, I guess, the information I've gleaned over the last couple days to get up to speed on this issue. I think the previous presentations, you know, by Mr. Morimoto has provided a lot of information that we agree with. You know, there is a, the map that's up currently, there, the pavement, at the end of pavement is where the county considers its right of way. Beyond that, the gravel road is within state unencumbered lands. But clearly, there is access there. It's a public access that goes all the way to the other side of that property where had the cones. That's access. Actually, the property, you know, the property that came up that had the cones and that formerly had the gate, is actually an easement granted to the state. So there is reserved public access through that easement to the other side, which is to state unencumbered lands. And that's adjacent to the stream. And so there should be access. So we agree, there should be access there. Shouldn't be...
Can you use a pointer?
Oh, oh, sorry.
Like wait, because it'll be pointing, but you never want pointer.
So you see, this is the property where this property expands Makai of this access easement and mauka. But yet, there is an easement through this property here to reach state unencumbered lands here, and this is the stream. So it is public access. Right now, there are cars and people can access the beach through, and it's been, folks are parking along this area here. So there, I mean, there, yeah, sorry, it's hard to see. It's a little zoomed out. Yeah, you'll see that here that there are, there's parking happening here. But again, this is an easement to, and this is state unencumbered lands. I understand that there's boulders placed here and it was placed there by the state. It may or may not, and this is just my understanding to date. It may or may not have been in response to possible homeless issues. I don't know. I can't really speak for the state and exactly why, but that was one of the thoughts it was in response to some, to homeless. Let's see, so I guess, I mean, that's my understanding to date, yeah.
I have a question. And I wonder if I could use the little pointer? So I actually have been asking questions for a number of years and definitely when Auntie Haunani raised that issue, I sent letters in to the Planning Department. And so, right here, okay, like right here over here, I know there's a Kuli'ana land that belongs to Kevin Pike. So he has Kuli'ana right there. I believe that, right here, we have the owner of that property sitting in the room. I might have that one right. And so access down there is something that's important. I had looked at this at the time, right here, this area, and it, on the Q Public site for real property tax, it said Princeville Development Corporation on the road. Right here, this was assigned on our RPT Q Public site. It had it to Princeville, so I immediately called Mike Liu and Jay Fafar because I'm like, what's up with that, you know? And they said that they had gotten it. And when I looked on the report section of Q Public, it had a date in there of when it had been assigned. So I was kind of having little fits over that. They are both my friends. And, but I never could find it on the BLNR piece. And now our county Q Public site doesn't name any reports on any of the road properties because I was looking for this here. Do you know what's up with our Q Public site, why it doesn't? Okay, because that's something I'd like to find out. And I guess when it's my turn, I'll bring more up there, but my question is, I have a question.
Who's the other question I have?
Okay, so there, I guess, I kind of asked a question you said you didn't know. So my question is, up until very recently, because I've been watching this issue for five years and addressing this issue, we have another person in the room here that I've been addressing it with for. This had always said Princeville, so I just don't understand why now that's not there on the road, on the, on the report. Okay, I have, when I have my presentation, I'll ask a little bit more.
Hi, and thank you for being in the hot seat, Jodi. My question is, Peter Morimoto brought up some old land maps that showed that road, Anini Road, that traversed all the way up into the stream. And I know that road exists because I was a small boy with Pope Brown, Fuhii Bai, Mallette and Moy. That was a real precious area. Like what had happened? Do you know from the times, from Mr. Morimoto's map that showed a road? And how did we not take that road out now? Because your picture doesn't show that road. But the maps that Mr. Morimoto presented had a road. So who is responsible for removing roads from maps that you guys provide in front of the council? How did that happen? Is that, what division has that right to look at maps and either instill a road or remove a road?
I do not know.
Because that's what I want to know, right? I want to know what happened to the road. Because the road is endless over there, but the road used to go up quite a bit of ways.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know. I don't know what happened with the road.
No, just very simple. When you were talking earlier, you were talking about that property, right? And it was in the black box. And did you say that that property includes, and the black box shows it, but you said it includes all of this property, mauka of the road, and then that little bit of property Makai of the road?
Right.
So... It wouldn't have always been that way because that was a government road. And you would think the government owns the road if it's there.
Yeah, let me, we, I also, this morning, was able to find the old, the TMP map. So this kind of reflects, according to our records, you know, this is the, this is the end of Anini Beach Road here, but this is, this is a, this is an old government road. And then here is that property that reflects an easement here. And so these are 16 lots that were carved out within this subdivision. So, and so this government road is, you know, within the quote-unquote "state unencumbered land" area.
So what did you say? Did you look at that map, the part that's Makai of the road seems pretty significant compared to what you actually see? Because one of the testifiers had stated too that the water debris will come up even mauka of the road. So if that's true, even way back when, why would that be private property? Makai of the road.
Makai of the road. So you're talking about this road here?
Yeah, well, you were saying...
This is just, this is just a reflection of the historic T M K map when, when the condition that existed when this subdivision was carved out. You're right, it was, time goes on. The evidence of the historic upper reaches of the waves of the wash, that, that's what delineates state lands versus private property lands. And that's why you require, we require, or state requires a certification, state certification to delineate which lands are public lands, state unencumbered lands versus private property. And so when we're talking about this property here, and this is that sliver of green where there's lawn chairs, et cetera. Yeah, there's clearly need to kinda delineate which is state public lands now and still private, private property. And which is why, yeah, there is a need to, I guess, follow up and work with the state to get a certification done based on the historic evidence of the upper reaches of the waves of the wash, of the waves.
And would you be initiating that?
We, so that, that's part of the, the issue. I don't, I don't know of any process where it's, it's not landowner led and requested. But that's something we were.
You'll be the first.
This is, this is something we've been working with. And so, but, but as far as the planning department, we don't necessarily, if there is a, a proposal, like a SMA application or, or, or other structures being going in, yeah, we require a certification before we accept an application. We, we don't ever become a party to request a certification. It's just pursuant to review of our permits. That process has to be done.
But not only does the private landowner come to planning to initiate the process to evaluate and make the determination? The public can come to planning, right? Would it take a community nonprofit? Or an entity, has to be some entity?
I think it becomes.
We're the county, right? I mean, we represent the people.
It becomes an issue on state regulating their, their properties. The state unencumbered lands, any encroachments within the state, state areas, state unencumbered lands. Much like we have jurisdiction to regulate things that go in our beach parks. That's our, that's our, our jurisdiction, our lands, right? But when there's an issue on, there's, there could be encroachments, there could be things that are existing in estate lands. That's a state regulation to regulate that, what goes in, in their, in their areas and their unencumbered lands.
Yeah, so again, Councilmember Collins stated five years she'd been sending correspondence. So what has been accomplished?
So in my, again, in my limited couple of days of getting up to speed, I am aware that we did, we did have complaints based on the blocking of the roadway.
Yeah.
To which we agree, this is a public roadway.
So you guys had inspectors go out and tell a guy, the gate needs to be open?
As far as I know, yes.
And, and so.
And, but we also had to loop in state because again, that's a state eas, that's an easement, right?
Yeah.
State access easement to the unencumbered lands.
So just letting the state know that you'll be going out on their behalf and notifying owner that that access, access needs to be open?
Yeah.
And was that gate to prevent homeless at night or something like mahalapu, is that, is that?
I, I, I don't know. I don't know what, what instigated the gate.
Well, it probably, I mean, they, they probably read the map and said, well, that prop, that easement is on our property. We can protect the rights of our property and they, they figured they'd put that gate up and found out that the gate is, is illegal or whatever.
Yeah.
So now, the more important question is even for Matt, you know, having heard, having seen what Peter and has presented, some of the legal questions, the need for immediate survey, is, is there gonna be like some type of meeting with the mayor to see, hey, councilmember's been standing for five years. What you guys saying? No brainer, what the heck? I mean, are you, do you, do you see some, some kinda meeting taking place where we take some action and try to preserve rights of our local fishermen, local beachgoers, families like yours that your father-in-law go to Anini every Labor Day? So I mean, you know?
Yeah, I mean, we, we've already, and to my knowledge, our planning director has already reached out to the state to try to see, you know, what, what, what can we do to address these access issues?
Thanks, cause yeah, I mean, certainly, you know, Jeff Stone can own whatever he wants, but he cannot take away what is not his. And, and that, we need to set the rules down right now and stop all this nonsense about, I, I'm gonna try this and try that and see if I can get away with it. You just set the rule now, protect the guys without money so they can have what we, we deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for being here, Jodi, and apologize that you had to come on last, I mean, short notice, but who enforces the SMA law on Kawahi?
We, we do.
The county, not the state?
Yep.
Does planning have the ability and the authority to go out and enforce the public access law?
We, so you're right. I think as I sat here, we're taking note of issues that we probably need to investigate as far as the activities in the SMA.
So, you know, I'm extremely frustrated, and not at you, Jodi, because you're, you weren't here five years ago, I don't think. And I wasn't here in five, but, but you know, this is my first attempt at trying to resolve this issue. And five years, and we couldn't even go down and do an investigation. We couldn't go down there and look at what was the problem. The SMA permit, he probably doesn't even, there's no SMA permit for that location, right?
I, I'd have to check what, what exactly was permitted.
Now, based on what you saw today and based on the testimony from the residents and even some council members, we know that the upper reach of the wash is well above that nice green patch of grass that has been artificially planted, which is against the law.
Right.
Right.
But, and, and not only that, I mean, SMA, there is jurisdictional issues between, of course, state and county, but yet we do regulate the SMA. So there are certain activities.
I keep hearing about the state, the state, the state. Okay, let's focus on what the county can do. We regulate the SMA law in a county. My, my question again, it's the law, it's the violation of the law to artificially expand the vegetation. We, that's not my law, that's the state law. Who's, does the county have the authority to enforce that law?
So, yeah, under the SMA, any placement of materials or structures within the SMA would require SMA permit.
And that is not the state's responsibility to enforce?
Correct. I, I'm just saying, I'm not necessarily only blaming the state. I think state involvement is inevitable and necessary to fully tackle the issues, the issues that we've heard.
That's the next step, right? But what, my question is, what is the, what's in the county's toolbox right now? That we can go down there right now and take care of the problems that are existing?
Right. So, but I mean, if the issue is, there's, there's various things, right? The access issues, the access, as, as far as I know, the, you know, this is just again, what my understanding the last couple of days, the cones were removed and the security guard clearly cannot be diverting people. There is already access next to the property in question. It's just really whether there's also access down the road along, onto the unencumbered lands with the, with the boulders and, and the state put the boulders there. So I mean, there's various issues that needs to be tackled to address qualitatively access.
Jodi, I'm not really interested in what the state is doing or not doing. I'm not interested, right? Today with the discussion in county. We, you had complaints where the public was kicked off the beach. We heard complaints of people not being allowed to go into the public access. There, there is a law, right? Is there a law that, for example, I think Gary Gujer many, many, many years ago introduced a bill or the law that, I believe it was a thousand dollar a day fine for any private landowner that was blocking public access? Who's, who's charged with enforcing that law?
So I can say that for planning's perspective, again, we do regulate SMA, but whether that allows us to regulate about, against the security guard being there and telling, or, you know, and, and what's, it's also tricky is that, that, you know, some, we've had situations where folks put up lawn chairs during the day for a couple of hours every day. But whether that is a structure within the SMA. So I'm just saying, I'm just saying, like, it, it gets tricky with the, the gradation of the uses.
It's not tricky when they're blocking access. I could, they could have 10 security guards on there, standing up and watching. I don't care. But when they block our community from going in, that, that, that's a violation of the law. And all my question is, who is charged with enforcing that law? Is it planning? Is it D L N R? Is it K P D? I don't know, and I'm asking the question because those violations have already occurred. But there was absolutely no penalty, no citations, nothing. So I'm just trying to understand.
Right, so I mean, as, as far as I understand, the previous complaints on access that the planning department had dealt with, we've involved the state to, for the state to go and enforce their easement to open up access again. That's how the planning department has, has used the power that we have in order to address that access issue.
And I guess I'm just trying to figure out what, where does the county's power and in the state's begin? Or is there, is there a dual authority as far as enforcement? Thank you.
Sorry to ask these difficult questions, but question I wanted to ask you is, do we have the right as a county to impose a fine on an area that has a illegal structure, post, gate? Do we have the availability as a planning to issue a fine?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. And I think we did that with the Grofam fence that went down to Maalia Pool Beach. Now, that gate is an obstruction of access. How come we cannot go in there and impose a fine and, or just, just, just remove the gate?
So again, I, I have to, I, I, I have to really take, sit down and look at all the previous enforcement.
We have that power.
Right. Look at the previous enforcement files of what happened. But yes, if there is a structure that's affixed within the SMA, that's something that we do regulate.
Last question I have for us.
Yeah.
On Kawahi, do we allow gated or gates to block off communities to be on another side? In any subdivision, any, any access area from Kikahaolo to Haina, do we as Kawahi allow gates to exist where people cannot go in and out?
That cannot go in and out? I, I, I can't speak to the whole island. I don't, I don't, I don't know exactly.
I can tell you we don't, but I just wanted to make for you, but thank you.
Just the same thought process, but with the grass. I'm assuming that's, that's a state issue.
Again, placement of materials and things that are fixed to the ground, yes, that, that is within the SMA purview. Thank you.
Can you put up slide number five?
Which presentation?
From Peter's. Anyway, on that, that slide, it shows the, the property and then beyond the property, and you had mentioned it too, the blue box that is state property. So they would have to go through that access easement, the government road. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's the whole area, so. That slide that was there would work.
That was slide number five.
In the handout, it has a blue box, but that's okay. Basically, towards the stream side of the property we're talking about in the black box, that the government access road goes through, there's a state property.
I'm sorry, yeah.
And is it D L N R?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the end of the, the.
At the end, closer to the stream.
I believe is managed by D L N R Land Division, yeah.
Yeah, so all I'm asking basically is whose property is it? How is it used? What is the planning's record of the allowable uses on that property?
I, I, I can't speak to any, I don't think there's any permits or anything in our possession, right, that relates to the state map.
So it's just like conservation land or something, or?
Yeah, like, I mean, I think Peter put up the statute that delineates the unencumbered lands. It's including beaches.
Because even then there, right, where that state property is, then there's this other property in the back. And is that's private property then?
Which one?
Like where that, whatever this is here.
I'm sorry, so you're asking if that's the private property? I, I believe.
I think it's all.
I think the owner's in the room.
Oh, you see, so the owner's in the room. So does the county then have, like, what is the use of that property? I mean, obviously, they have to go through that road to get to their, their property. Like, the public would need to, to use that other state property.
Yes.
Which is what not being used. So I, I just kinda, maybe you can follow up and figure out. And if D L N R is holding on to it, or if they've subleasing it to anyone, I mean, I guess it just takes some follow up.
I mean, clearly, again, I think, we, I think we all, we agree that this is a public access.
And two more public lands?
Yes.
Including the stream, I guess, which is there, not just the ocean.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions for planning? Just one more, so the bottom line, right, is the SMA permitting process is under planning, not county.
Right.
I just wanted to make that clear because.
I mean, another, another, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Another, another thing, or I guess option or thing within the planning department's or actually council's purview is of course the, the open space, right? Open space fund. And that is a fund that can be used to purchase access, I mean, and, and acquire coastal, coastal lands. So that, I mean, that is one option where the use, of course, it should go through the Open Space Commission to the proper vetting and of course ultimately is approved by you folks. But that fund could be used to purchase that sliver of property. Possibly condemn it. Most likely condemn.
Your proposal? Yeah, or the council could initiate the eminent domain proceedings without going to open space.
Exactly.
To make it a lot quicker.
Right, but I mean, it is a pocket of monies, right? The, yes, yeah, and the open space fund is.
I mean, yeah, we would use their money, but yeah, thank you. Okay, members, any more questions for planning? No, thank you.
And I have a simple PowerPoint I'd like to be able to show that I think would add a lot. This might help Mr. Morimoto. Can I, can I?
You wanna do that? Yeah, I'm actually. Is this, wait, is part of our 10 minute discussion that we have?
Oh.
I mean, I don't wanna set the policy now that if it's not your item, but because you're from there, you can have like more time to speak than I'm here.
Okay, we'll just leave it here. Just call it back over here on the council floor.
No, I'm serious, I mean, it sets precedence.
Let's do it that way. We'll close.
This is just opposing state.
Further discussion here at the table with the council members.
It's not a political forum, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I wasn't trying to make a political forum, and I, I did ask the chair, but I guess not. So can I put up my, my little presentation? And I'll whip through it pretty quickly. And I, I might, okay, all right. So I've been focused on this for a long time. And I think I have something to add here, and I'll try and make it go very fast. Did, did you guys get a copy of my presentation?
You gave me one. I'm not sure if the other members.
I saw that they were printed out. Allison, do you have them? Did somebody hand them to you? Okay, so the historic trail system, presented at the Ely of Anini and Hanavai. Public access on pre-1892 trails and roads is secured by 1892 Highways Act and HRS 264. The historic trails are held in trust by the state unless disposed of according to HRS 171. The historic Alunui Trail System in Anini has not been relinquished by the state, nor has the access on it. nor has the access on it. The next slide is a map. This map came, I believe, from 1833. And this shows all the Alaloa. This map was made by, actually, a woman. Can I just say, yay, girls? So this is done by a missionary. And so if we flip to the next page, the American Board of Calvinist Foreign Missions showed where, with the little blue dots on this next slide. Oh, I do this, right? Okay, so, okay, so you see the little triangles and blue dots. These are churches and outstanding meeting houses. So we see between the Waioli Mission in Hanalei and then the next square up at Anini, which is right next to this, like, kind of snack surf house, I think they're calling it. They had a little school there and an outlying mission house. The next slide, again, we're seeing where these churches are between Hanalei and Anini. So this, they had a, a road on Alalui. It was a road that went in between these two places. And this is his early maps. Got one more little one. We really went through a lot of effort to look at the paperwork and the assignments that came there. They called Kaike a little bit, that was another word for the area. Here is the Highways Act of 1892. And the part of it in chapter 264 for the Hawaii Revised Statutes. You guys all have a copy of it, but one we've been asking about the pertinent laws. And I sent to Peter since he asked. HRS 115 is the coastal access law. And HRS 115-9 is specifically about not blocking beach access. Something I sent as a question to planning and county attorney. This is Uncle Teddy Blake at the Hopa Trail. He sued. And what came out of that lawsuit is that it's up to the state. The county cannot assign a road to a private entity. It has to go through the Board of Land and Natural Resources. And relative to Princeville, like, right now, it's empty on that road on the county website. But if it did go to Princeville from the county, and I see no record of it in the state, it probably is still yet a road in limbo and doesn't belong to this property here. Now, I, because it's my style, I called Jeff Stone. I always try and talk to whoever might be impacted. I want to hear from both sides. He was super helpful. Hope and I went down to the property on Monday and met with their team. We did talk about this. This is a picture with the high wash of the shoreline, the waves. The sand comes over. I'm going to show you another picture in a moment where it does it not just to this property, but plenty properties. So we have to be a little careful if we decide that the high wash of the wave is where it ends up, sometimes in the middle of yards and even into the back of people's garages up against their house. But I want to say that his team was great. They were super helpful. We had the documents there. We were looking at the history of the elements. We talked about the state putting the boulders there. This is an area that I do spend time at. And the state put the boulders there to keep the houseless community away. I did go somewhat door to door, asking people a little bit to the east how they felt. There was mixed feelings. Some people were very unhappy with the closing. Other people appreciated the security. I did talk to the, the team here about the security. Because I will tell you, I have been blocked walking along the beach and told to get off the beach. And the security system didn't know who I was. And not that I am somebody special, but I did pull rank and tell them, you can't tell me to go off the beach. And I challenged that. And I do go down, and I talk to the team there about that. I go down when there's a high wash of the waves, and I see fresh raking. And the grass comes back way faster than could ever possibly happen. And I don't recall in the history for grass being there. They were actually amazingly good. They were like, hey, we're totally fine if people are walking on this road, walking through there. They were hoping and feeling that that white picket fence was very relevant. I copied Honani Pacheco because you have something good to say here. It says, "My ohana has lived in Wanini for over 100 years this past Thursday. The road to the end, to the end of the road was blocked off from public access. Those of you who go to the end of the road to picnic and fish are not able to drive to it." So she, she speaks about what it is there. I know I have a very short period of time, but I, I felt that her point was very important. All of this, we need to go to BLNR, Na'alahele, Ahamoku, Oha, State Historic Preservation, do a cultural impact assessment and Akaian analysis and shoreline certification before any kind of disposal of a historic trail can happen. But I will say, at least with the crew there, from Jeff Stone's office, they're like, we don't want to take it away. What I do know is who might be working one day isn't necessarily what might be the case in two or three years. But I was really encouraged, and I communicated with Jeff after the communication. He was behind it. He was very, you know, it was tense, but, you know, positive. So what I would like to be have happen is that this stuff works. We get in the process of creating that confirmed win-win. And, and we talked about what can be called a cart trail. I learned it was Princeville that turned the word from highway to cart trail. But as you come up next to the west end, and there's like a guava row that I think is really from birds pooping on the fence, but so it's like there's a tree tunnel. And so there's a guava tree tunnel. All of that needs to make sure is held in perpetuity as our historic trail. And then, Christian, I gave you those other two pictures. Are they right here too? There's two more pictures that are, okay, further, okay, let me see. So I had pictures in, in somebody's house. Because this is important to me, where you can see how far up the high wash of the wave goes. Okay, so here's a picture of one house. See how the sand comes across and into somebody's place? And then there's a, a next picture? This is another area, and I had gone in there while they were cleaning it out. And, you know, and other friends of mine that, they were sweeping out this. So if we were to say that the high wash of the wave is absolutely the shoreline, we're going to be taking away really, you can see, it would have gone into the living room right here, right? So the high wash of the waves can be really extreme down there in Anini. But guaranteed, it goes over the road. And pretty regularly, I'll go down there after a big surf, and you see all the little pieces of wood that have gone into the yard. Okay, did I miss my time period? I'm over my time? Okay. All right. Pardon me? Way too long?
Oh, yeah, we got a caption break. We got to take, unless we can wrap it up in the next.
Can we wrap it up?
Because we had a break because we were taking pictures.
It was in a 10-minute caption break. Yeah, I would say we take the caption break.
Okay, we'll do a caption break at this time for 10 minutes, and then we'll be back. So we're in final discussion here at the table, and members, I know Chair Foz will wrap it up.
I hope he'll wrap it up, but I'm not, I'm not a committee member.
I know, I know.
If anybody else wants to.
I can have other members speak first. So let's start with Councilmember Bolasan.
I want to thank Chair for bringing this issue to our council and having this in on our committee. This was a tough one. I, I like many local people that was born and raised in Lihue, not in, living on that side, and not rich. Our, our excursions with family was to the North Shore, the West Side. That was our memorable moments as family. That end of the road, we had lots of camping memories and have lots of memories there. And to see these photos is a travesty. It's breaking my heart in every possible way. Having a newborn at five months thinking that he would not experience the things that I would experience as a kid, and then hearing the many testimonies, sharing their perspectives on practicing their culture and practicing their livelihood. The best one was, was one of our testifiers to say, this is a no-brainer. And the "da" was so loud in my head that it hurt. So I'm at, at the point where we must take immediate action as, as soon as and as quick as possible. So I'm open to every suggestion that is on the table. Many of them which were extreme, in which I'm definitely open to.
Okay. Councilmember DeCasta.
Thank you. Where do I begin? I'm telling you where I begin. I'm going to look out into the community right here. Recognize Pearl. She sat on the Open Space 2003, 2005. She spoke about this issue. She spoke about many open space access, Maoka to Makai. Pearl and I spoke about a very important issue, open space, Aldine, Kalahail. And I'm going to reference this because we spoke to Alexander and Balden, and we tried to negotiate. And in good faith, we go out and talk to landowners. I wasn't a councilman. I was just an open space person. And in good faith, they tell you, yeah, we'll open it to the public and let the hunters go. You know where that access is today? It's absorbed into a subdivision that was sold to a billionaire. And that Kalahail Mountain Access is gone. Because that's what happens when we turn a blind eye and we think we can negotiate and hold them in good faith. The Kobayashi's, the Humasuris, Horaguchis, Onalis, Pachecos, Olanolans, Hamaras. As all my father's friends when he was little, we got Mount Shore. I'm not going to West Side politician. I'm a Kauai politician. And I tell you what, when I look at this, I'm really worried that that gate is still standing, that access. That gate should be removed, dug out, put it back to its natural state. Yes, we may have some homeless that was traversing Julia. But there's other ways you can deal with the homeless than to block off access to our local people. That road, and I saw, doesn't even go to the last two properties. That last two properties should have one available road going through. That stream should be available for us to go park our vehicle and go get, you get O'opu, you get Hi'i vai, you get the prongs. You know what happens to our generation? It skips one. Our children, our mopuna, not going to be able to go down to the stream. They haven't for a generation. When we lose that, then we lose that site. Just like how Peter Morimoto showed us the land map with the road. And then the county's new land map, Nomored Road. Somewhere along the line, government officials had let that road disappear. And I'm sorry that Jody is the one that got called on, because she's not working that long for the county. You can go back decades that this is a problem. Let's fix the problem. Let's rewrite the wrongs and get our accesses back. There's a lot of accesses that still got to be available. Not only Makai, but Maoka. Maoka right in Kilauea. Maoka Unit C above the billionaires is all open for access with county easements that are in language since the 70s. But yet we don't, we don't open, we let it absorb by those ag owners. And then there's a generational gap that lose the information. And unless you know people within the planning department and administration to get the information, because we're not smart about that. Mrs. Gu is the smart one. Saigusem, sorry. She's the smart one. She's the one that can pull the information and help us. Unless we have community members like Mr. Morimoto, Mrs. Cummings, Rosinu came forward with old maps. The Pachecos, like your testimony, only 100 years. Let's not lose any more access. Let's go get back everything for our people. Thank you.
So Vice Chair Kuli.
Yeah, mahalo nui loa to Chair for putting this issue on the agenda, asking for this to be on the agenda. And mahalo nui loa to the folks who came forward and shared all their testimony, especially to Peter and even Councilmember Cowden for sharing the maps and some of the research that you folks have done to, you know, even see all the historical stuff. Public access is actually, is absolutely a critical priority for our fishermen, for our hunters, for our gatherers, for our families, and for our kids. I mean, it's actually for our way of life, right? I mean, it's, it's, you know, many of us. I grew up in a, in a poor family. We didn't go away on vacation. So we, we basically went to vacation, like some said before, to the North Shore, Analei Bay, camping with the Pacheco and Kilauea family. Oh, Kimura family in Anini and all of that. It's been a long time for me since I've been there in, in that way. But that's, that's how we were brought up. And I think this public access issue across the island is critical for, for our families and for, for our future. So we have to do what we need to do. Working with the state, I don't think the county and state can do this thing where it's for you to do and no, it's for you to do. I think we just got to work together and get it done because that's what the people demand and, and deserve, you know? And every instance is going to be maybe a little different. And if we have cooperative landowners, landowners, even better. But we have to make sure that these kind of pictures don't show up. It's kind of troubling to see that, you know, that the people would be inhibited from accessing their own public lands, whether it's along the coast or Maoka, you know? It's just important that we do what we need to do. So I'm hopeful that after today, we'll get some follow up from planning and that we'll just pursue this further to make sure. Auntie Anani also mentioned, you know, not only this specific place there. She mentioned a whole list, Larson's, Kaili. I mean, we can go across the whole island and, and find different examples from just what the, the testifiers shared. So I think it's important that we stay on it and follow up. Thank you.
Senator Murbakaw.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Now, I want to thank, first of all, I thank Jody. I think, you know, she's done a tremendous job stepping in for Kaiana and other staff that may spend more time, but just her harmonies and, yeah, her, her wisdom, I think, was great. So thanks, Jody. And to Peter, you know, obviously, spending a lot of time giving us some of our history and, and arguments about why, you know, this is so important and why, you know, we need to do something about it. Now, I hope here at the council is that when issue like this is brought up, like Peter was to do this presentation, talk to the mayor. Mayor would get his team on it and just, and just nip it. It was five years ago, two years ago, five days ago. But obviously, the progress has not happened. And then we still get, you know, questions, outrage at, is this going to be, you know, a lingering problem with this rich developer that has money? I mean, if I was to meet with him, my conversation would be really different from Councilor Cowden. I'll just, you know, tell him, I know you have money, but I expect you to, if you want to be part of the community, you gotta, you gotta give more than you're entitled to. Because it goes a long way to make peace with. Because it goes a long way to make peace with the middle class, the poor. To let them have even more rights than they had prior to your ownership. And that will show, you know, the community that, okay, you know, you have all the money, you can buy this, but at least you can be trusted on, you know, some level. If you don't see that, it'll be just typical. You get the money, you can do whatever you want to have what you want and forget about the people. You know, so I think, and for me, you know, I may not come from the North Shore, but I taught at Kappa High School for fourteen years, eighteen years. Special education, driver's education for ten years. I know the North Shore community, especially that younger generation that I taught. I know them well, you know? So I do care about the whole island, about my West Side. West Side boy. So the West Side guys gonna call me all the time. You know, on this issue, maybe they call Councilmember Cowden. But, you know, when the issue is brought up to our council member, you know, I think the key is, in the future, we gotta give everybody one chance. If nothing happens in five years, maybe you gotta call me instead. You know? Because it's about the results, right? It's about the results. I mean, you know, you're five years away and then we're here. You know, maybe I could have done something a little bit more in two years, you know? But, I mean, it's just giving everybody one chance because we don't need to be hogs about, you know, or possessive about one issue being ours that we're gonna cure. We gotta just, together as a team, all seven, yeah? Figure out a way to get this thing into the mayor, that he gonna get his team to work together and accomplish what was before and what will be for the future. Is total access and even improved access. And it's not to disrespect the owners and their TBR residents. You know, no. Local people are not like that. They're, you know, I mean, we don't trespass property, we respect property. But we make sure that they don't take more away or treat our residents, you know, to make them feel uncomfortable. Because the beach is our right. It's a privilege for our residents forever. And we gotta protect that. And I remember my first night diving experience, maybe I was about ten, was Anini. We had that heavy cast iron dive light, had about ten D batteries inside. And I think lasting like four hours and then it would just go out. And if you're going more than four hours in that, out there, you'd be in the dark. And, you know, nighttime before, in old days, everybody sleep early. So it's kind of spooky. You look, you know, you don't know where the lights there. But that picture cannot get out of our mind because Anini was so colorful. It was like, really like Jacques Cousteau, just looking at all these beautiful colors of coral and fish and seaweed. And it's nothing like that now. It's brown, yellow, whatever color, you know, after one flood, what the water looked like. And it's, and you don't have abundance of fish, lobster, you know? And, I mean, we could be choosing. Now, I think, you know, the kids probably should whatever they can see because, you know, it's just, otherwise you'd be diving for hours and hours and not take anything home to eat. I mean, our kids, basically, I think, if they're middle class poor, they eat everything they catch. So, I mean, you know, there's no waste to me, even if they shoot something on the side. But as long as they eat them, I think. But, but it's just the memories of Anini that go back, that we need to somehow improve that aspect as well, to bring that back to before. And I think this council, you know, needs, again, to get our mayor to do something rather soon and get the surveys done, get that grass removed on beach property if that's the case. Issue fines so that would discourage that kind of action in the future. I mean, big fines, not small fines. And give those monies to improve, you know, Anini Park. My family just camped there this week. Big family gathering and they had a wonderful time. And thank you to the North Shore people for always hosting the East Side and whatever, West Side people for their, like Mel said, "No money." No money for go mailin'. Anini is our Disneyland. But anyway, mahalo. And just contact all the council members in the future. Because, like I say, you know, all of us work different ways. But I feel like I'm results-driven. Thank you, Chair.
Just, again, mahalo for all of you coming in and testifying. And Anini, this whole discussion is very, very important for all of us. And family-wise, politically, you know, overall, taking leadership. We're working closely with our planning department and making sure that we follow through on everything that we discussed here. That's an important part, access, access, whatever the perfect access. But I know we can go on and on, but I appreciate all the discussion. Be assured that we will follow through, working closely with our planning department. And of course, administration taking the lead as well and council providing support. And, you know, it's a team effort totally. And that's what I'm hearing right here. So just wanted to say that upfront, a lot has been said already. And be assured that there's a commitment by this side to move forward. So at this time?
Chair, I have one more point before you go to him. Just what I forgot to say, too. I was happy to hear Councilmember Cowden say that she has a relationship with Jeff Stone and that working with his team was great and that they were helpful and that they didn't want to take the access away. The only thing I would say to Mr. Stone and his team is, please, please don't even give any kind of appearance that will look like you're, you know, inhibiting our public from accessing the area. So remove all cones, stop parking the ATV at the entrance. Remove surf racks and boards from the beach. Remove the furniture, chairs and tables. Just put it on the white side of the fence, on the Maoka side of the road. And have your guests or whoever come enjoy it there. And if they go on the beach, they have the right to go to the beach too. And they can carry the chairs with them and sit there. But when they leave, they should take it back with them. So it doesn't look like you're putting your presence there as if you own it, because you don't. It's the beach. And, you know, me personally, I'm okay with you helping maintain the beach, but just don't put yourself on there like you own it. And in fact, in the future, if planning shows us how, you know, there was talk about, oh, public access monies and trying to buy that piece of land. It's the beach. So I ask you, Mr. Stone, to donate that piece, that is Makai of the highway and Makai of the ironwood trees. There's nothing, Makai of ironwood trees that should be public lands. Obviously, the ironwood trees is there to protect the private lands, excuse me, private lands, Maoka of that, from the sea breezes and all of that. It's just a small piece of land that really is an extension of the beach. And the pictures show that. The pictures show that very clearly. Whether we see grass or sand, it's literally just feet, you know, not far from the ocean itself. And then the sand comes up in the high wave time and it's just very clear. So let the public enjoy that, please. Chair Fozel?
Thank you. First of all, thank, thank you, Peter, for posting that on Facebook. I think, and I think Ms. Kabibi said, you know, we should all be aware of everything that's going on. And, you know, unfortunately, we don't know what we don't know on this body. Maybe some members know, but I can honestly tell you, I didn't realize Anini, I hadn't just had him in on there in a long time, but I didn't realize it was as bad as it is. And seeing these pictures, as Mr. Kuli said, is quite disturbing. You know, a year and a half ago, when I came back on the council, Councilmember DeCosta came up to me and he said, you know, he really wanted to focus on public access. And that he'd been unsuccessful in his prior term for whatever reason. And we immediately submitted a request over to Planning. And we got the list of all the accesses that the county has. And it is a lot. And there's a lot of accesses that we need to go reclaim. And we're actually working on maybe four of them right now. But then the Anini one popped up. And when I saw the Anini issue and when I did my research, I realized that this was the one we had to attack first. Because it was, in my opinion, the most egregious. So that's how this all started. And there's been a lot said today, a lot of pictures, a lot of stories. And it's very easy to get tangled in the weeds with something like this and start making excuses. There is no doggone excuse for this. There is simply no excuse. I'm gonna, you know, I mentioned about the public access law that was passed. And Matt Bracken, thank you. It's HRS 115-9. And I'm gonna read it because I think, let me just read it first. Obstructing access to public property. A person commits the offense of obstructing access to public property if the person by action or by having installed a physical impediment intentionally prevents a member of the public from traversing a public right of way. Disqualifies. A transit area. A public transit corridor, I think maybe they're talking about roadways. A beach transit corridor. Yeah? And thereby obstructs access to and along the sea, the shoreline, or any inland public recreational area. Physical impediments that may prevent traversing include, but are not limited to, gates? That's one. Fences, walls, constructed barriers, rubbish, security guards. Guard dogs or animals. And this one is the one that I think we need to act on right now. A landowner's human-induced enhanced or unmaintained vegetation that interferes or encroaches within beach transit corridors. That is exactly what is going on at Anini. And this is even better, because I thought it was a civil thing. But obstructing access to public property is a misdemeanor. It's a criminal offense. I mean, you can go jail. In other words, a security guard can be arrested. Whoever planted that grass can be arrested, should be arrested. That is the law. I appreciate efforts to negotiate, but I tell you what. Our county has lost accesses, as Mr. DeCosta talked about, because we have miserably failed at negotiating with landowners. I'm not interested in negotiating. When it's our right, it's our land, what is there to negotiate? Seriously, what is there to negotiate? Oh, give us back our land and we give you some? No, 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 no. In other words, get your crap off or you're gonna get arrested. You're not gonna get cited, you're gonna get arrested. That's how. And I think that's the approach we gotta take. And I think this is a great example of where we should start. We've lost so many accesses. I mean, you know, I can sit here and talk about Anini, about the veil veil and, you know, shining the light at night and see all the lights flicker and you can throw your pole in the water. And I think I said this at one meeting last year. You never even have to put bait on the hook, man. You just throw the hook in and you caught the veil veil because they just, I don't know, they eat metal, I guess. I don't know. But, you know, Peter did a lot of research. Peter's, you know, he's well-respected. I consider him an expert. And he gave us every reason why we should act and so did many of you. I have actually worked with sending memos to DLNR. I mean, when we had the ala law controversy in Molua where, you know, and Bill Ila flat-out said, "We're not interested in pursuing the ala law." Like, bro, it's not your option. The ala law is the ala law. It's not, you don't, even if you're the director, at the time he was the director, you don't have the right to say, "Are we not gonna pursue?" No, no, that is ala law. That's on the maps. You don't, you cannot give that away. We cannot negotiate our rights to a public access away. It's wrong. It's just wrong. This extension of the shoreline or the, yeah, the property owner, he plants the grass, you know? People write him reviews with me when we went out with Karen Diamond. And we saw irrigation, pipe tubes in the ground. I ripped them all out. I ripped them and just called the cops. I ripped them out of the ground and it was so, so egregious. It was so disrespectful for the landowner to go in and actually plant Naupaka and put irrigation hoses in there to water them so they can, so his or her property could be extended and take away our public access to the beach. That's just wrong. And as I'm finding out and remembering that, it's also criminal. I love that, it's a criminal thing. So Jodi, I guess the question, the answer to my question is, if it's a criminal matter, then we probably would call KPD. So that's the clue to all of you. If you ever get bothered by anybody at any public access, you call the cops and then you call me and I'll make sure the cops do their job. Because I tell you, once you arrest a couple of these guys, it will stop. It will stop. Yeah, so I'm not, I'm not really optimistic about getting any help from the state. I really not. I don't think they care. I think they got, you know, whatever. So anyway, this is, this is, first of all, Mr. Chair, I'm gonna ask that we defer this for two weeks rather than receive it. And next, in two weeks, we'll have Kaiana, we'll have DLNR, BLNR, OCCL, whoever we gotta get in the same room at the same time, so we can clarify this matter once and for all. So I'll be asking for that for the next two weeks, next committee meeting. We'll just keep this item going. But this is what I would like to see, and this is what I encourage my colleagues to support. Number one, investigate and enforce existing laws there at Anini, right now. Send somebody out there, send the cops, send what we know from the photos where the shoreline is. We know where the upper reach of the wash. And I understand Mr. Councilwoman Cowden's comment about the upper reach of the waves might be extreme. In some cases it is. But listen, that is not in place because we're trying to protect property owners' rights. That is in place because we're trying to protect the property owner's life and property. And we want, we don't want to see their homes and structures in the ocean. That's why we have that. So we have to use. Now, I'm not talking about the hurricane upper reach. I think the way the statute reads, it's seasonal, so it's the winter. The highest reach during winter, not hurricane, that's, you're not counting that. So the highest reach of the wave during the winter season is where the shoreline should be. Is that my twenty minutes? Okay, let me just, can I get just one more? We gotta get the state to do the shoreline survey. And if they don't, I've asked Matt to request or to look into if the county can. I believe we can. I think we can. I think we can request and pay for the shoreline survey. And then I think we need to start looking at exercising our right of eminent domain for that area. So we'll start exploring that as far as basically condemnation of that. And we can condemn what we want and we can make it a vehicular access with a parking lot and a bathroom. We can do a lot of those things if we go down that route and open space. So anyway, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Can I just have one follow-up question? Like, if you look at past practices, this has been such a problem for so long and along Hanalei. I would watch it and I would work with Karen Diamond too. Call her up and we work on it. They move. We have strong landscape companies who come in, extend the shoreline fifteen feet, and the vegetation line fifteen feet, like for two weeks, around five properties. Then two weeks later, come and do it again, come and do it again, come and do it again. So people get like forty feet onto their property. And you lose all that place to play with your babies on the beach. And this has been a problem, a persistent problem for a long time. And when my children were babies, I was complaining then. And I think that we need to look, definitely at Anini, but we need to consider how we do this everywhere, especially along the North Shore.
And we'll definitely follow up, like Chair Fozel said, on all the other, you know, making sure we bring it back, revisit everything and bring it back to the table. So without any further discussion. Because we solid, right?
So I would just ask that, yeah, if we just move to defer, it'll show up again, the same item will show up again.
So we can move to defer, so we can, you know, relook at everything again and bring it back to the table.
So, second.
So the deferral will happen. Everybody, bring it back to the table, okay?
Take the vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I believe in the committee.